I do welcome everyone to the city council meeting on November 8th, 2021. And call on Councilman Moore to do our dedication.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this night with your many blessings. We thank you for everything you've done for us, Lord. We pray that you be with us tonight and help us make every decision that we make. Be right for what's right for our city of Eastlake. Bless all these citizens here that care for their city, Lord, and bless those that aren't here and just take care of his city and bless it, Lord, in Jesus' sweet name. Amen.
We do the pledge of allegiance, but tonight I'd like to ask any veterans that would like to come stand up front here and help us lead the pledge of allegiance would be great. All veterans, come on up. Great.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Item four's approval of minutes is written. Don't hear any changes or anything that'll take a minute as standard written. Report from council members. Word six.
Yes, sir. Kent Knox, thank you for your service. I enjoy working with you. You did a great job. Denise Davidson, I don't see her today, but she was here somewhere. Looking forward to working with you today. Thank you.
Word five.
Kent, I'm working with you. I've been a lot, must be two years that I've been here, working with you. And also I wanted to commend Chase, which I know he'll do on his event part, for a wonderful downtown event we had for the Halloween event. It went well. Everything was nice. It was food, sailing, and I commend him for that. Great job, Chase.
Nobody could figure out what night Halloween was, though, right? Everybody's celebrating a different night.
Pick one.
Word four.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you. Kent, I may get emotional. He's my brother. He has been for eight years. A man of his caliber, I thank him for everything he's done, the knowledge he's given me, the way he's held my hand and walked me through this event. I was here when he was elected. I was here when he got married. I was a part of both of them. And as holy mother night, this is not the end of his duty. This is the beginning of his life. For him, it's his precious life to fill that bucket that they've had that now can be filled. Thank you and God bless you, Kent.
Thank you, Terry. Word three.
I'd like to say the same. I have employed servants with a judgment and a follow. I have learned a tremendous amount. I have watched you be graceful under hard conditions. You're knowledgeable, and I have learned from you. Thank you so much. Denise, glad you're on board, but we're gonna miss Kent.
Well, thank y'all. Y'all going in reverse sequence like this sort of takes the wind out of my sails. But I want to commend Terry and Jim for retaining your seats and continuing on for the next four years. So you're good, solid people along with our dean of our group anyway. But we've got such a good group here, and so I commend all of y'all. And I commend Denise Davidson for a campaign well-run, well-organized. And so it's the will of the people, and I'm very good with that.
Yes, sir. Several things. I hope everyone can hear me. I either get this too close or too far away. But I too would like to congratulate Denise on her victory. And I also would like to thank Kent for his eight years of service to our city as a city councilman, but also many years as director of the Chamber of Commerce. So thank you for your service to our city, Kent. Couple of other things. The Rec Committee meeting, Recreation Committee will meet this coming Thursday morning at 8:00. Along those lines, I would like to congratulate our 10-and-under Green Team, Come Out of State Champions, who won the state championship in football, defeating Abbeville 24 to 0. So congratulations to those contributors. Thursday, of course, is Veterans Day. And I just want to offer my sincere thanks to all those veterans, those present tonight and not present. God bless all of you. Thank you for your service. And then lastly, no, that was it. I covered it. Sorry. Rec Committee, I got that in. So thank you.
Update on city activity.
Just Chase, Ken.
He's gonna take care of that, okay?
I just want to thank our departments for a successful Halloween event. I know Ms. Nancy said I did a great job planning it, but those guys, police, fire, public works, recreation, they helped put it all together as well, so I want to thank them. Upcoming events, we've got a big Christmas lineup, so I just want to go over a few. You'll see it on social media. You'll see it flyers around the city, kind of telling what's gonna go on this season. But firstly is our city Christmas tree lighting, which is gonna be Friday, November the 26th. That is Black Friday. It's at 5:30 in front of City Hall. Also that weekend is the Historic Downtown Carriage Rides, which is Friday, November 26th as well, Saturday, November 27th, Friday, December 3rd, and Saturday, December 4th. Those are in Old Market Square from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. That is sponsored by Prisma Health, Baptist Easy Foundation. You can find out more information on their social media pages as well as ours when we get that posted. The next thing is the Greater Eastlake Chamber of Commerce Annual Christmas Parade of Lights. That is coming back this year. Chamber of Commerce is working very hard to get that arranged. That's gonna be downtown Eastlake, Saturday, November the 11th, starting at 6:00 PM. Oh, my bad. Yeah, December the 11th at 6:00 PM. And also Santa Claus will be down at the gazebo fountain area weekend, starting Friday, November the 26th, until Saturday, December the 18th, from 6 to 8. So that's what we've got coming up. If you missed any of these dates, it will be posted on all social media and as well as posted out throughout the city in different various locations. So thank you.
Christmas parade?
Did I mess up?
Yes.
That was the parade of lights? Yes, Parade of Lights, December the 11th.
Chamber's doing it.
Man, I want to mention one more thing. Our own Lisa Chapman just done a five K. She's a hero.
She did, yeah.
Good job, good job.
Can, do you mind giving us update on the boot drive? I know that was a big activity for the city.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As you know, annually, the Fire Department conducts the, what we call the boot drive. And we basically take one of our structural firefight boots for multiple across the city. Other departments in the county participate with us. That money is used to donate to the Jeff Chavis house at the Augusta burn center. Jeff Chavis house is a place where families and burn victims can go and stay together as a family. And it's a really cool place because if you've ever had a burn victim or if you've ever had anybody at the burn center, it's a traumatic event for everybody involved. And of course, burn injuries are someplace that's close to our heart is the Fire Department. This year, thanks to the donations of our community and surrounding Pickens County, we raised over $20,000 Saturday morning. Thank you for the community.
I'm waiting to walk while you're filling the book.
Item seven is citizens wishing to address city council, and I'll turn that over to Lisa. Each person that's signed up will have three minutes to talk, have a conversation. We will not respond back. We take all of your information in and give it to a staff member. If you want us to contact you back, make sure you put your address and telephone number along with your name on the door.
Waverly Wilks. Good evening. My name is Waverly Wilks, and I work for Gray Engineering. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak tonight and take a little bit of your time. I did want to discuss one of the items under new business. It would be letter E, which is the annexation of a parcel to a R 7.5 zoning. The request is for a straight zoning of 67 acres. The developer has looked at the surrounding area, the surrounding zoning. This is a pocket of land that is surrounded by city property already. So it is something that's currently in the county, and we are looking to annex in. There are several adjacent subdivisions, apartments, townhome developments in this area. They're all within the city already. We are requesting the R 7.5 zoning mainly for lot width. We are, this is a fairly unique property in that it is essentially around an existing subdivision. There's actually land that is directly adjacent beside existing lots. Keeping that in mind and knowing that those homes have been there, that community has established, the developer did look at transitioning that. So it wasn't all of a sudden, boom, here's a smaller lot size right beside it. So in keeping with that, that is a R 10 zoning neighborhood community. So in keeping with that, the developer has planned to the adjacent lots that are actually on Daniel Drive in that area to keep them at a 10,000 minimum square footage. That way to ensure that those existing neighbors and those existing homes, it does provide that transition and it's not such a stark contrast in that area. So we are committed to doing that and keeping those at 10,000, whereas for the 7.5, it could go down to 7,500. Something to note, there are several creeks and wetlands throughout the property. All of that will be handled by our own site stormwater and will be permitted, of course, through the city staff and then also through DEPAC as well. Just to ease any of that concern, if there is any stormwater runoff, we plan anything that is coming from the property we're discussing annexing, that will be handled within our stormwater system. Hopefully alleviate if there is an existing condition for a list of talking naturally does flow to someone's home, we will do our job to make sure that that does not negatively impact them in any way. We do want to be good neighbors and make sure that we do fit in with the community. So with that being so, we are requesting the 7.5, which would allow for five and a half lots per acre with the topography and the site layout. As I mentioned, there are creeks there and everything. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Marion Summing.
Good evening, folks. Good evening, mayor. Want to say I appreciate the opportunity. Say that, please, for you. That's really a fear in my heart. And thank y'all for allowing us to do that, these veterans. That's very special. So I thank you. Of course, I'm here. You know I'm here. I'm talking on unfinished business of item eight, problem, the ordinance that cities come up with about grass clippings. And although I still disagree with that, I understand what you're trying to do. It's a clarification. I know that it's already in force. But what I'm simply asking as a citizen, representing other citizens who have expressed some kind of dissatisfaction with this than I have, we do not have some kind of a resolution or some kind of really what the position this has put us in. We've looked into what the county requires, and Mr. Garrison, I think, is trying to help us figure out if it's a system we can use bagging or some kind of a barrel or something. I think it's unreasonable to expect citizens of my age to have to haul clippings. And I understand the situation with the equipment disruption or maybe tearing equipment up. And I know that I've checked with other cities about what they're doing, and they haven't had as much problem with this city of Eastlake, particularly the city of Pickens. I grew up in Pickens, and they still collect these grass clippings, and they're not seeming to have any problems. So I'm not saying we're doing anything wrong. But I do think that we need to consider giving us an alternative to what we're, what you're taking away from us. We raised taxes. We bought a vehicle to do this. And now we're gonna seemingly waste that asset by not using it. And that's what I've got to say now. There's other people that are gonna speak about this this evening. And I appreciate the opportunity. I know that's why we have this, is so we can come and voice our opinion. And I do support the city. I want you to know that. But I do ask that y'all consider and give it close consideration, help us out with this situation. And I thank you for your time.
Jay Hudson.
Good evening. My name is Jay Hudson. I live at 216 Meadow Lane in Eastlake. My comments are in regards to ordinance 2021-27 to add its property on Meadow Lane, also known as a Pelzer Highway Annexation Proposal by Mark Creek Property LLC. Even though I'm a simple voice, I want to be clear that I speak for many White Acres residents. All of us will be affected by this new development. In consideration to the council, we will not have multiple people stand and speak similar versions of the same concerns. We are not opposed to the annexation. We believe having city rules and regulations is a positive. We are asking the city council to be considerate of our interests and concerns. One of our main concerns is traffic. Currently, there are approximately 72 homes that use Pearl Drive or Meadow Lane as the only ways to get into or out of our subdivision. In the planning commission meeting, it was stated that the new development would add 163 homes. That triples the number of homes to approximately 235. But it was also stated that the new development would use Meadow Lane as access to and from the new homes, triple the amount of traffic. As well as all the added traffic on our neighborhood streets, there will be problems on Pelzer Highway. Vehicles using the center lane to turn left out of Meadow Lane will come head-on to those turning left out of the large apartment complex on the west side of Pelzer Highway. This is a dangerous situation. Additionally, where Pelzer Highway intersects Pearl Drive, there is no center lane. During moderate to heavy traffic times, those turning left from Pelzer Highway onto Pearl Drive will cause a backup on Pelzer Highway. This could become lengthy. Those wanting to turn left off of Pearl Drive onto Pelzer Highway already have a difficult time, adding more traffic to that only race at worst. Because of these issues, I request the city council require a traffic impact study as part of the annexation approval. Further, the City of Eastlake Land Development Regulations Ordinance, Article 4, Section 4.2, Item 3C, states a development serving 51 or more units shall have a minimum of two entrance/exit points. Article 4, Section 4.3, Item 3D of the ordinance also specifies the arrangement of streets shall be such as will not cause hardship to owners of adjoining property in providing convenient access. I request that these existing ordinances be adhered to. I thank you for your attention and hope you will seek fit to support these requests. Also, thank you for supporting the veterans.
Thank you. See you soon.
Diane Stanley.
Good evening. I'm here to bring again the issue about the alley on Blair Street. Let me reiterate that there's five homeowners that have to use the alley to get in and out for parking because we do not have a driveway going from Blair Street to our property, I guess because of the retaining walls. And under the assumption that you plan on abandoning the alley, I don't see how you can do that when you have five homeowners that rely on that alley to get in and out and to park. That's the only place we can park. This alley is not our responsibility. It is the city's responsibility. The city put it there. That's why I don't see how you can think of abandoning it. You're abandoning me if you abandon the alley. It has been neglected even during the winter when there was ice. I could not go to work on a few occasions because I couldn't get out. I should have brought this to your attention then, but I was too busy working. So I'm asking you to take this into consideration. You know about how it needs maintaining with the brush and the trimming of the trees, scratching up my car, or else I'm gonna start sending in bills from a collision shop to get it fixed. I don't see what's so hard about having twice a year employees come and do the trimming and dispose of the trimming. I don't see why our tax dollars aren't enough to provide that for us. And I thank you for listening to me again.
Dawn Marini.
This is in regards to the Pelzer Highway Annexation, the double E's I just see on the agenda. I'm speaking for myself and other residents of White Acres that attended our community meetings and corresponded to me via email. As Jay said, we're all in agreement for the annexation. We understand the zoning is R 7.5, and the developer agreed during the planning commission meeting in October that all lots on Daniel Drive would be the same as White Acres. The zoning ordinance, Section 1.5.08, pre-existing front setback, states the setback must not be less than the average of the setback on the existing developed lots. On Daniel Drive, the average setback of the existing home is approximately 70 feet from the structure to the road. The expectation is new homes on Daniel conform to the White Acres setback measurements. Also noted for the record, my conversation with Mr. O'Shields that the homes built on Daniel Drive will not have the curb stutters and sidewalks normally required for new developments, ensuring the continuity of the street. A major concern is with the massive oak trees that's occurred on Daniel. These trees greatly exceed the 24-inch diameter requirement per Article 4, Section 4.2, Item 2 of the Land Development Ordinance, and should be protected. Using Google Earth, I found this area to be approximately 3/4 of an acre. This area would make a wonderful green space for the community. Imagine sitting under those massive oaks, enjoying a little piece of nature, a small respite from the hectic lives we lead. Due to the homes being built on slabs today, there's little chance for developers to adhere to Article 4, Section 4.2 of the ordinance for preserving the natural features of the site and minimize negative impacts and alterations of natural features. Therefore, we're requesting the developer to make every effort possible to preserve those trees on Daniel Drive as well as other trees that meets the minimum 24-inch diameter requirement, located near the rear of the property. And it would be nice to preserve some of the trees that don't meet that requirement. The next statement is reminding does not reflect the residents of White Acres. I am requesting the city council to make the land development review committee public. I want to also request the city council to require the developer to provide a reasonable fact simile of the proposed developments regardless of the zoning request. This rendering should be posted with the agenda for the planning commission. This will at very least provide the affected residents with some part of the idea of the proposed development. Excuse me. As the section is of the planning commission meeting and hearing conflicting information, it's not providing the proper information to the residents. Thank you.
Margaret Gordaney. Is that the way you say your name?
Jerdanny.
Jerdanny.
Hi. My name is Margaret Jerdanny, and I live at 226 Meadow Lane. I'm also here about the new project ordinance item E. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As I say, we all have rights. The landowner has the right to sell his land. The developer has the right to build houses. The real estate agents have the right to sell homes. And the residents and homeowners of White Acres have the right of protection of their land and property. And the residents and homeowners of White Acres have the right to be safe. The existing residents are not trying to stop the development. We are trying to protect the quality of our lives as they exist now. We are asking for safe roads and safe and sufficient drainage onto our properties. The landowner will profit from the sale of his land. The developer will profit from building new homes. Real estate agents will profit from the sale of those homes. Profit is being made by many. The needs of the homeowners of White Acres should not be ignored. We should not have to take a loss so that others can increase their wealth. The loss that I refer to is a loss of safe roads and damage to property. We are asking for safe roads and proper drainage. We don't want traffic accidents within our neighborhood or while trying to leave and enter our neighborhood. We don't want our homes destroyed by water or mud. We want to maintain a safe community. We want to protect our property from damage that may be caused by developing the land adjacent to White Acres. Please put yourselves in our place. You would want and insist on the same consideration for yourselves and your families, safety of life and protection of property. So please spend the money and take the time to do this project right, with everyone's best interest in mind. Let's all be good workers. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Bob Easton, I live at one thirteen Iris Drive. Councilman Dyson came to my house last week because I've been kind of elected as spokesperson. There's a huge housing event going on at the end of Iris Drive. There has been no upgrades to these roads in the last fifty to sixty years. The housing going there, fifty-something houses once it's done, is putting a very harsh strain on access. They're in two of them after they only have one left, Iris and Sylvia. Iris has a dead end, blind curb, so does Sylvia. Councilman Dyson even came out and sat there and saw the trucks and admitted it's hard for two cars to pass, there's no center on this road. Now these trucks are flying, they're ignoring speed limits, and they're doing more damage to the roads. When I asked how this approved, Ian told me that the planning committee reviews the plans and sets it up and they make the recommendation, recommendation to city council. City council spends very little time because the planning commission has reviewed this. I asked, were the roads and access not considered? And his answer was, I don't know, but I will have to get back to city council. Mr. Mayor, it's gonna come back to you. And the trucks are still flying up our narrow roads. We're concerned, there's kids in our area, these are big trucks. There's cars, somebody's gonna get hurt, somebody's gonna get killed. And we'd like some answers of what is planned to be done about this. And before I leave, I know my time's up, but you and I, Mr. Mayor, had discussed the council saying no grass clippings picked up with no alternatives. I mean, we felt like we should have alternatives before we say no, we're not gonna do this. Thank you very much.
Ms. Young. I'm sorry, I don't have the pronouns or first names.
Shalay. Shalay. Hi, good evening. The Bahais of Pickens County would like to present the mayor and city council members a framed artwork of the Golden Rule in honor of the one-hundredth anniversary of the passing of Abdul Baha in nineteen twenty-one. Abdul Baha is the son of the founder of the Bahai faith, Bahaa Allah. The Bahais all over the world will be commemorating his centenary passing this November twenty-seventh. Because he is a very special figure in the Bahai faith, our local community wanted to give you this and share just a little bit about him. In nineteen twelve, at the age of sixty-eight, he journeyed from Israel to visit the United States. He loved our country because of its uniqueness and composition and praised our diversity of cultures and peoples. Abdul Baha traveled across the United States, visiting many cities including New York, Chicago, and San Francisco. While in these cities, he spoke at churches, in homes, and at universities, sharing the teachings of Bahaa Allah to tens of thousands of people from many different backgrounds, both wealthy and poor, black and white. His talks and messages exemplify that there is one creator of humankind, that all religions are from one God, and that we should all live in unity. The first two sentences of his talk at the All Souls Unitarian Church in New York on July fourteenth, nineteen twelve convey his message of love and unity. His words are still applicable to the current conditions of the world. And so, quote, "Today, I wish to speak to you upon the subject of oneness of humanity. For in this great century, the most important accomplishment is the unity of mankind. Although in former centuries and times this subject received some measure and consideration, it has now become the paramount issue in question in the religious and political conditions of the world," end quote. We as a civil nation must cure the prejudices that cause disunity. Our children deserve an inheritance, one of peace, of security, of love, and of unity. Please accept this gift of this framed Golden Rule and the oneness of humanity hand-ridden. We hope they will offer a constant reminder as you serve our community, a message taught by all religions of the world instructing us to show forth kindliness, compassion, and respect towards one another as we ourselves wish to be treated. Finally, in commemoration of the centenary extension, we will have a presentation at the Public Library of Eastlake at two-thirty on Sunday, November twenty-eighth in the afternoon, and we invite you to come. Thank you very much. Good evening.
I'm Alvin, the mayor. My name is Thomas McKay, I'm with Board of Directors of Foothills Playhouse. On behalf of the board, we would like to invite the mayor, the aldermen, and all the port heads to our address rehearsal this Thursday night at seven-thirty. As our mayor is doing their last show called the Dixie Swim Club this season, and we would like to have an audience there to make sure they're ready for it. And I've got some flyers here, but if you have any questions, I'll be here at the council meeting.
Did you say Friday?
What now?
What time did you say?
At seven, seven-thirty PM is the showtime. The house will open at seven o'clock for people to come.
That's Thursday.
It's coming Thursday. And it's a lot of, people that they have been working for over two months on this show to get it ready and everything else. And we have had a hard time this year because of COVID, and we would want to see people back involved in our theater. And we've got a super season for next year, which I'll talk about another time.
Jim Cooper.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council. After the last election, I think that you can feel some tension in our community. Grass clippings, I think, is kind of a proverbial straw to broke the camel's back as far as a lot of citizens are concerned. What we're asking is that these annexations and all of these readings that are on the agenda tonight be tabled. Don't vote yes, vote no, or table these things. When I start to go on a trip, I've got some options. I can go GPS or ATNIS. If I don't use either one, I'm probably gonna get lost. The comprehensive plan is what you should be following to move the city following. As you know, the comprehensive plan is way out there, working on revising it, but it's not used. Even if you refer to the old plan, it would be better than what you're currently doing. You're doing it by flying by the seat of your pants. We're tired of it. We're gonna be watching your actions and your reactions, and we're gonna ask that you start tonight to show that you're concerned about us, the citizens, who have voted you in to represent us because we don't feel like we're getting in fair shape. So tonight, when these come up to vote, we're gonna be watching, finding out who's voting yea, nay, or somebody will offer a motion to table it until that comprehensive plan can be put into place, and then we get some guarantees from the planning commission and from you folks that you're gonna abide by. Thank you.
Allen Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, for allowing me these few minutes to express some of my concerns for, it's really for the city of Eastlake and the surrounding areas. My focus is the always stop at the five apartment from Glenwood Road and Cannon Drive and whatever that is, that, you know, the always stop there. I'm sure everybody has been there at one time. And my concern now is that since they have opened up one-twenty-three to Saluda Down with that red light, at the busiest part of the day, all of that traffic comes right way there to the always stop. And if you're coming from Eastlake, you're backed up all the way up there to the five point. And we cannot get out of our subdivision. And that has been an ongoing thing, and it has been brought to this council many years ago. And I do not know if it's the city's responsibility about that or the county. I just like some direction. Because living there for the past fifty years, it's just been a blessing because it is an accident ready to happen. Now, I know my three minutes might be up, but I need to get this out. I need to know where do I stand, where do I go, who do I talk to? Thank you so much. Oh, one more thing. I love to do a trash dance, but I've got a little flag on my upper that said I didn't have my close enough to the road. Now, I'm no young chick, but I bring it out as far as I can at the end of my drive. Because if I can get some help with that, I certainly would appreciate it.
I can put you in Tom A. I don't care.
Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to thank you for all your kind words and your comments, and I look forward to working with everyone here so that we can move, continue to move Eastlake in a direction and taking care of our current existing residents. Several, one topic that I didn't really plan to address tonight, but in the work session this afternoon and in the work session last night, there still is conversation about options or alternatives for grass clippings. And I would like to, since that is still under consideration, to ask the council if they would possibly consider tabling this reading tonight until a final decision is made. If you're going to do grass clippings, if you're going to find an alternative, then I don't see the point in terminating the ordinance. But that's up to you, but it was a consideration. My main topic tonight is based on comments that were made during the September work session and about the two properties that are for sale. One, Item F, and number, letter A, under number ten. In September, it was discussed that the city of Eastlake was going to produce or create an inventory of all the property that the city owns. I don't know if that's been done yet, but before a piece of property is sold, that it would be, in my words, professionally appraised. Now, tonight at the work session, I heard that there was an appraisal by a relator. I don't know what the basis, I don't know who the relator is, and that is irrelevant to me. But considering that we are looking at American Rescue Plan funds for the city to repay lost revenues, I think it is incumbent that the council is exploring all options, getting professional appraisals for these properties and any properties, and that these properties should be made available and posted for anyone, because I don't know that any property values are going down at this point. And for instance, the one, Item F, that is wanting to be purchased for eight thousand dollars, as mentioned during the work session, thank you, it was listed as sixteen thousand for the market and the taxable value at sixteen thousand, and that was in twenty-twenty. I can't imagine that it's less than that now.
I am here to show one of the alternatives for the grass clippings. This is a thirty-gallon paper bag that I purchased from Amazon. You can find them at Lowe's, Humvee Cove, and Walmart, where they are being used. They are being used in the town of Mount Pleasant, which is much larger than Eastlake. I have mentioned this to the mayor when we spoke back in October of twenty-twenty, and of course, my councilman, Mr. Garrison, I appreciate him bringing this up to y'all at the work session tonight. I'm not sure what the argument is with the county why they don't want to accept this, but I would like for y'all to research this further, because if the town of Mount Pleasant and the city of Charleston can do this, surely they have come across every issue that might be hindering our county from accepting these. I am here in support of my neighbor because he takes pride in his yard, and that's what we want. We want people to take pride in their yards, and we don't need to make it harder for them to do that. I'm very fortunate that I have a lot next to me where I can sprinkle my clippings. He does not, and there are many people that don't have that option, and many people that just aren't physically able to haul their debris elsewhere. This is a manageable size. You put this out by the road, they still, speaking of Mount Pleasant, they collect the bags, but they still come around and collect the larger shrub, tree, things of that nature as well. So I encourage you, please don't give up completely on grass clipping pickup. We need an alternative. We've lost curbs I've recycling, we've lost the grass clippings. To an extent, we have lost trash pickup, and that beach umbrella this year didn't get picked up because it didn't fit into the receptacle. So you're taking away from residents. Please don't be so quick to take this away from us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Paul Harrison, I'm a member of the county. My name is Paul Harrison, I'm with Blue Door Civil Design. We're a local civil site work engineering firm in the upstate of South Carolina located in Greenville. Our address is seven eighteen Land Hill Road, Greenville, South Carolina, two nine six oh seven. And I'm here tonight to talk about under new business items, Item A, B, C, and D. These are all annexations and zonings into the city of Eastlake for the development of residential subdivisions. So I brought some information with me, some work boards, some color renderings, some renderings of the building elevations and stuff like that. I know I don't have time now in this three-minute time limit, but I do have that information with me. The client is here tonight as well. It's a local developer from Greenville as well. And we're seeking to manage this property into the city of Eastlake for the development of a very nice community that we feel like would bring a lot to the city of Eastlake. Lots of open space for all of these parcels, lots of green area, open space amenities, pools, cabanas, and walking trails, fire pits, lots of amenities that you would see in some of the newer developments that are being developed in and around Eastlake. Eastlake is a desirable place. The upstate of South Carolina in general is a desirable place, and you have lots of people moving this area each and every day. And we think this is a great development. We think it fits in well and is compatible with the surrounding area. It's located on a fairly new, newly constructed road. The infrastructure's there to support this development, and we just think it'll be a great addition to the city of Eastlake. Like I said, I will stick around, and the plan is here as well, and I brought some documents with me tonight as far as plans and building elevations and other supportive documents if that, if that were to come up during the time of the discussion of this. the discussion of this, uh, this request. So we thank you for your time, and, uh, we ask for your support of this, uh, of this application. Thank you.
Could you tell me the name of your company again?
Bluewater, Bluewater Civil Design. Sorry.
Thank you. Darren Webb.
Uh, Mayorwoman, uh, council members, thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Darren Webb. I am with Mark Three Properties at one seventy Camaro's Drive in Spartanburg, South Carolina, two hundred and three zero one. Um, I'm here specifically to, um, discuss item E under new business, which is ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-seven. We have, um, obviously been through plenty of commissions last month, and here to kind of address or discuss any further comments. We've listened to citizens' comments, um, aware of those, and appreciate everybody's feedback, and at least wanted to address some of those things concerned specifically to the annexation and rezoning of this property. Mrs. Wilkes spoke earlier today regarding the project. She talked about some of the concerns from the citizens regarding, uh, stormwater runoff. Um, there were concerns from the citizens about, you know, is there additional runoff gonna be happening throughout the property? But I think she spoke, um, eloquently about it, that, you know, this is gonna be a current gutter subdivision, so everything's gonna be contained, obviously with jurisdictional requirements permitting. There'll be storm waters and, uh, storm water, um, retention ponds in place to accommodate any additional stormwater runoff. Um, some of the things, other citizens' concerns, um, I understand, um, they enjoy the natural, um, elements of, um, what is there now, but, um, basically regarding our open space and common area commitments based on the ordinances, twenty percent, um, is required for open space, and what we're actually providing is thirty-four percent. So we're giving you more green and common open space there. Um, in addition to that, uh, the number of units that are allowed per the ordinance, it's five point five units. We're actually only taking that down to two point four units. So again, it's a better, um, development intensity than, um, some of the citizens, um, were concerned about. Um, one of the big things, um, that I wanted to, as a comment, um, just so that we'll have it on record, is based on our proposed design, um, in the access point, is that, you know, approximately seventy percent of these lots in the subdivision will have one new single access point, and that will be off of Daniel Drive. Um, there's been kind of some, you know, some online discussions about adding a second access to these lots via Meadow Lane, but that has been proven to be too insurmountable based on stream, wetland impact, combine utilities has a huge twelve-inch forest maintenance.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Webb and I share a last name, but we, I've never met the man before today, and there is absolutely no connection between the two of us, uh, Mr. Robinson. I don't mean to accuse myself.
Thank you.
Watson Naglin.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Watson Naglin, three oh three program. And the whole time we've talked about this, this committee, most people that's around here, uh, who talk about grass clippings are plot acres, and I'm here to talk about plot acres. We sit down, we talk, we got together early this whole time, and one thing this man just said, he was gonna tie in Daniel Drive, and we was told that if we not beat Daniel Drive, we'll be tying him down. He's got wetlands, I'm sorry, if he, this project is worth this much money, he should be able to afford a bridge to go over this wetland. It's a stream. It's a very small stream. And the same stream that he's talking about, when they go out, no matter, they have to cross the same stream. So I don't understand why they come to the council meeting tonight and want to change it. I was always wanting to say, Council, please vote this plan in, you know, because they give us their word that they were not gonna tie in. The developer said they wasn't gonna tie in. Now, for the last minute, they come to us and tell us, Donna, uh, all these members right here can tell you the same thing, every time we was told, then we tie in and down. And we started to tie in in the first curve coming in. So there's a creek going, so he's saying that creek, you can't go to that creek. That creek is very small. I don't know, I'm not a bridge builder, but I don't, I'm not a real station agent. I do live there, I do wanna stay there, and it's not fair to say all those cars to a subdivision is over fifty years old because he don't wanna build a bridge to go out, or a culvert, a culvert is over right now. There's a creek, a pearl that goes over and, Jim, how long's that creek been there? And it would go right over everything. So he can change that, and so I'd love to tell Council, please vote this program in, because I know it can go to the county, but the city is, we talked, Mr. Hoffman, and he's, we all talked the whole time, and the program was, we're not tying it down, we're tying it down. And it would be blocked when people turn it left out of that new subdivision, turn it into our subdivision, which is why that's a question. This is a total change of plans, as the last person to speak here now. Just leave it. Thank you.
Adam Eight is unfinished business. This is the second readings. A is ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-one, business license ordinance. Uh, we're standardizing business license ordinance, and this is the second reading. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, a motion to bring this, uh, ordinance to the floor of your discussion.
Second. Tell me, you wanna comment on this, or?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, be glad to. This is the second reading for the business license ordinance. This will get the business license ordinance in line with the state of South Carolina's, uh, plan to, uh, set up a portal for businesses to use online. Uh, we've been working on it all year. Uh, we changed the rates, we changed the classes. Uh, the state will set up a portal that can be utilized, and this will affect January one, twenty-two. First reading was approved last month, and the rest, it was second reading.
Any questions for Mr. Hoffman? Dennis Allen?
Call for a question.
Call for a question. All in favor of this ordinance, raise your right hand. Any opposed or none opposed? Ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-two to amend the ordinance to classify grass clippings, uh, that will not be picked up by the city at this time. A motion?
Motion, bring it to the table for discussion.
Second.
Second.
Eddie, you wanna comment on this, where you're at now? Let me, let me clarify something, and I'll ask Brian, Brian, go there. Um, we probably still have to, have to vote to clarify the ordinance. Uh, there is a plan in place, like you heard at the work session, but with that new plan, we still have to be in the ordinance. Uh, am I correct, Brian, with that?
Yes, sir. This is to clarify.
That's great, yes, sir.
To avoid confusion to the citizens.
That's great, yes, sir, yes, sir. And so I'm turning over to Eddie to try to get you, brought you up to where we're at. We're not ready yet, but this is where he's at.
Yes, sir, as best brought. In the work session tonight, we've been discussing the, uh, proposition of getting carts and then picking up with the, with a, uh, trash truck when we retired, retired for service when we received our new side loading truck. But we are, we are heavily considering going to the roll carts, and it'd be a brown car to pick grass clippings up, and then we could run that route. It's about ten percent, uh, here, the numbers, I don't have them right here with me now, but it was around ten percent of, uh, service to the city. It was seven, approximately seven hundred residents, and I think that would be the best way to come up with a solution.
Mayor, I'll, I'll speak, um, as you know, I've opposed this, um, every time we've discussed it, based on the fact that we did not have an alternative in place prior to, but I also understand this is more of a clerical issue. The resolution is already passed. That resolution to stop grass pickup, clippings, pickup has already passed. Um, I don't wish to bring any further workload to our, um, employees and, and fielding phone calls and, uh, trying to answer questions. So tonight, I will not vote in opposition to this. However, as you know, I am still adamant about having an alternative, and I do sit on the, um, Public Works Committee, and I will continue to ask this question until, um, we exhaust all possible options.
And, and we're not saying that we won't, you know, suspend the service for it. We're trying, we wanna do it the best way that we can economically for the department. I mean, we still wanna provide service.
And I understand that. I, I trust what your word, and, um, again, I know our, the financial, uh, restraints that we have endured, endured on our equipment, it's just not feasible that way, but again, I want us to find another way. Thanks. Eddie, you got a timeframe of when we think this could happen?
The truck that we have now is still a backup truck. We still are waiting for the arrival for this new side arm loader that we purchased when we were bringing the cart program on board, so.
Do they take it back when you come?
We don't, they're still waiting for the ripper parts for the, for the, that actually ripped can, and of course, COVID is another, uh, delay for that, and we were supposed to have the truck this morning, and they're telling us the last official date we heard was mid-January.
Okay. Well, we've, we've heard it loud and clear, and I have faith the amendment states will stay on the agenda, on the agenda of the Public Works Committee, to continue to look at alternatives to picking up grass clippings. But we've heard, we've heard you loud and clear, uh, in, in the short run, we're not gonna be able to do it. It's just detrimental to our equipment, but in the long run, we're gonna find a solution.
We're working on it, yes, sir.
We have a financial responsibility to the people of Eastlake, and to burn that much money on, uh, equipment, and I mean burn, uh, is not feasible on a continuing basis. So we look for a solution.
Absolutely. We're still looking.
Eddie, the thing you showed us the night in the workshop, the new truck, we showed it the video up, when was that, challenge you?
Uh, about two months, about, about a month and a half ago.
But that's possible, the best thing to go on market.
And they told us the only alternative to keeping the little small clippings from blowing all over the place was to purchase a tarp to get away from the top of the truck.
But what we seen tonight, and directly from long, we seen that machine running, picking up grass, grass only, no sticks, nothing else, just grass, and it looked like a dust storm out the top of it. Where it would be blowing dust into the neighborhoods, onto their cars, into their yards, on top of their roofs, it would be amazing.
It, it, you saw the amount, I guess, yes.
So there's nothing else better than that at this time?
As far as we know.
But I like, they said, I would like to continue to look for something.
Yes, sir.
But, so it's available, we can.
I think once they finalize this, they're running some tests and doing some things to make sure this will work before you unveil it. If you unveil it, then, and it don't work, then we go back the same way we are now. Everything broke, tore up, and then a phone struck through it.
Well, that wasn't the whole thing we said tonight.
Is this something that we can, um, continue to have on the agenda until we ask the council if we can say we found something that works?
Well, what my recommendation would be to clarify tonight what we have on the agenda and clarify that, so we can clean the ordinance up, but what you're saying is, yes, we would have, the grass clippings would still continue to stay on the public works agenda for that committee. That's correct. And we would have to be brought up, uh, each month as to where they're at. And again, it's not our, I guess it is our fault. We don't know why the county would let us take the bags. I don't know why. They wouldn't even let us take limbs up there right now, so.
Again, I, I just, I would, as we mentioned tonight, work session, I, I'd like for us to look a little deeper into the back issue, and, you know, what are these other counties doing, why are they accepting and picking it's coming?
And like I said, their, their greatest fear is if someone sees the bag on the side of the road, that someone else is just gonna use a plastic bag.
And they're not, just not pick that up?
And they're, they're moving toward, uh, moving toward wanting to, to open a compost, compost pile at the county.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Yeah. Sure they have solutions. Right, for this discussion.
Calling for a question? Call for a question? All in favor of this ordinance, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Should have two opposed. And we, if you don't mind, we need to pause for just a minute. I think we missed.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize.